This is the MISD September 16th, 2025 Special Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Texas United States Flags?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, Pledge of Allegiance to the Texas State, under God, one indivisible.
Second floor, are there any public comments? All right. The Board will now go into closed meeting as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act under the Texas Government Code sections listed on our agenda. We're now back in open session and the time now is 5:58. Is there a motion to approve the amendments to the superintendent's contract as discussed in closed session?
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Turner. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to say I just, Dr. Ruffin has been here over 18 months now, and I would like to say that we have appreciated so much the work that he has done and how much time he has spent on our campuses and getting to know our community during that time, and we so much appreciate your leadership. Thank you so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. This meeting is now adjourned and the time is 5:59. This is the MISD September 6th, 2025 Regular Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please lead us in the prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for everyone that is in attendance tonight. Dear God, I ask you to be with our community. This has been a heavy, heavy week, not only as a country, but also in our community with loss on one of our campuses. I ask you to be with the specific family that has felt that loss greatly. I also ask you to be with us as we engage in this world and help us to be lights and leaders. Give us wisdom. I know you've promised us wisdom when we ask, and I ask that you give us wisdom as we continue to lead this district. We love you so much, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to the Texas State, under God, one indivisible.
All right. Special recognitions. Dr. Ruffin, are there any special recognitions?
We do. We've got a couple. Mr. Marino is going to come down and tell us who we got here in the audience to celebrate today.
Good evening, trustees. Well, it's my pleasure. We have some really exciting news in Montgomery ISD. Two of our outstanding campus leaders, Mr. Tim Williams, Principal at Lake Creek High School, and Mr. Gifford Whitehead, Principal at Oak Hills Junior High School, have been named Principals of the Year for Region Six by the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals. So, just for some context, what does Region Six mean? Texas is broken down into 20 different regions when it comes to school districts. We are in Region Six. There are 56 school districts in Region Six, and we have two of the Principals of the Year. So that is quite a recognition of two of our outstanding leaders in our school district. I wanted to say a couple of things about both of them, and then, you know, I think the most important folks to speak about our leaders are the folks on the campus. So I was able to get some comments from some of their staff members on campus as well. But Mr. Williams, he is, he's in his 23rd year as an educator. He started as a 7th grade Texas history teacher. I did not know that. And coached at CE King Middle School in Sheldon ISD. He's served as administrator for 15 years, and over the last 10 years has served MISD as a principal at the middle school, junior high school, and high school levels. Tim opened Oak Hills Junior High as principal. Tim's wife, Jamie, serves as director of the nonprofit with Helping Hands, and Tim has three children, Jalen, a senior at the creek, Kennedy, a 6th grader at Oak Hills, and Cooper in pre-K at Keenan Elementary School. So, a few, a few quotes from Tim's staff. As someone who has worked for Mr. Williams for a number of years on two campuses, I am well aware of what makes him a great principal and leader. When he hired me at Oak Hills, the year was already underway, and he needed someone to come in and hit the ground running. The trust and unwavering support he showed me then and has continued to show me over the years I have worked with him are at the core of who he is as a leader. And then another staff member said that, "It has been an honor and a privilege to work with Mr. Williams. His strong work ethic and unwavering dedication to set a high standard, inspiring both staff and students alike. His positive can-do attitude motivates everyone, from teachers to students, to strive for their best. You can truly feel his passion and love for the Lake Creek High School community, and I consider myself fortunate and blessed to come to work for him every day. It's always a great day to be a lion when Mr. Williams is your principal." So, congratulations to Mr. Williams. Mr. Whitehead began his-
Hey, Ms. Marino, can we have them come down here? I just think it's so much more awkward for y'all to stand up here while you're getting praised on it. Come on, Mr. Whitehead. Come on, Mr. Williams. Mr. Whitehead, come on. You're next.
No, no, no. You don't get out of that easy.
So, we talk about humble leadership. These two guys weren't going to tell us they won this. Mr. Whitehead began his career in education 24 years ago as an 8th grade ELA teacher and coach at Lockhart High School, Junior High School. He's worked in Montgomery ISD for 17 years, 12 of those as an administrator, and he's in his fourth year, fourth year, as principal at Oak Hills. His wife Melanie has worked in MISD for 18 years, and she teaches at MJH. His daughter Abigail was a 2024 MHS grad, and Aleah is a senior at MHS, and Ashlyn is a freshman at Lake Creek. What Giff's staff had to say about him? "It is an honor to work under Mr. Gifford Whitehead. He serves with pride, humility, intention, and confidence. Mr. Whitehead is deeply engaged with both staff and students, always approachable, kind, and genuinely invested in our success. He's an effective communicator, and when he sees a need, he takes action. When there's a problem, he has solutions. Mr. Whitehead creates opportunities for students and our community and stakeholders to feel connected." Then another staff member said that Mr. Whitehead is a servant leader who loves kids and believes in every student's potential. He tirelessly supports our teachers, always encouraging and giving them the tools they need so that they can give their very best to our students. MISD is a stronger, happier, and more successful district because of his steady leadership. So, congratulations to Mr. Whitehead.
I think we're going to take, we're going to take a picture now or after we bring the teachers up too? All right. Sweet. I just want to say, first of all, he wasn't lying. They weren't going to tell us about this. Good thing we've got connections attached, but they told us. Both these gentlemen, if you're on their campuses, if you talk to their staff, it is clear, the type of leaders they are, they always put their people first. They're always in the hallways, about the classrooms, in the car rider lines, front and center, dressing up silly, school spirit. Mr. Williams, I don't think I've ever seen him miss a sporting event or a game, or, and he's got three, three ones back, three little ones back there that he finds time to pour into. What's up, Cooper? Hey. Uh-huh. And so, we're just, we're so blessed and grateful. I think it's, it's incredibly unique, the fact that we've got both the high school and the middle school or junior high principal of the year for Region Six. Mr. Marino said there was 50-some-odd school districts in the region, but if you think about that, Conroe's in Region Six, right? And they've got dozens of middle schools, and almost feels like maybe dozens of high schools. I don't know how many schools they got. So, it's not just them against the 50, it's them against all the campus leaders. So, we're just so blessed and appreciate the work y'all do. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we're going to recognize some teachers. Ms. Dette Key?
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, Board of Trustees. It's very well-known in MISD that MISD is a place where we expect that our students learn something new every day, and in turn, we should also hold ourselves to that same standard of excellence and continue our own learning journeys. Tonight's designation is based on voluntary completion of letters, Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. Our participating teachers finished Volumes One and Two, completed over 100 hours of coursework while attending four live sessions in addition to bridging activities that were required of them to complete their portfolios. Content of letters is derived from the Science of Reading, phonological awareness, phonics, orthography, morphology, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, and application to planning and assessment. Letters is a nationally recognized certification through Lexia, and our cohort is facilitated through Region Six. These educators before you have given their time to grow professionally in an effort to serve our students and teachers to the standard of excellence that we hold in MISD. MISD had eight teachers complete the designation over the course of two years. Renee Francis, Carrie Fuller, Sarah Yates, Jennifer Marshall, Nikki Taylor, Kelly Kojis, and Madeline Stewart. Thank you, Board of Trustees, for continuing to invest in our educators and continuing to allow us to grow professionally to serve our students.
Before we get up and take a picture, I just want to say, we talk a lot about just the willingness to have a growth mindset, and as educators, it's a, it's sometimes we get pushed in this hypocritical stance of we expect our kids to show up and learn, but sometimes it's hard for us to stay in that mindset also. And so, y'all are a testament to what it means to have a growth mindset and understand that every hour that y'all spent improving your understanding of phonology, ology, all those ologies that Ms. Key just talked about, directly results in how you support not just our students, but our teachers, because some of y'all are in support roles for teachers also. So, thank you so much for what you do. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think they're leaving. Leaving.
I think y'all sit there first and then give our time to y'all.
I'm speaking from the heart. Second floor, are there any public comments registered?
Yes.
All right. Let's see that. All right. If the, thank you for registering to speak to the Board this evening. So that, so that everyone has an opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit them to three minutes. As you can see, there are a limited number of instances in which the Board can respond to during public comment. We cannot take any votes or actions based on public comments. Please keep comments respectful and focused on the topic you registered to speak. First up is Jenny Drew.
Good evening, MISD School Board and Dr. Ruffin. I first want to thank you for your transparency regarding the finances of our district. I often say that you make time for what's important to you, and that is evident in the balanced budget staff raises and how each of you spend your time on campuses, getting to know the schools that you have been entrusted to make decisions for. I personally find it refreshing. Something I do wish that our district leaders were a part of was protecting the First Amendment rights of our staff and students. Do I think Montgomery ISD should have joined the other 10 Texas school districts who challenged Senate Bill 10? Yes. Does it appear that Montgomery ISD is bending to the authoritarian government who now rules our once-free country? Yes. Can you go back in time and do and right this wrong? Unfortunately, no. What you can do, and I ask you to do, is please consider finding a solution for the imminent challenges heading to the students of Montgomery ISD. Not that it is relevant, but we are a Christian family. All three of my children have experienced bullying behaviors directed at them because they did not believe the exact way the Christian students bullying them did. One was told, "You can't be a Christian and be gay." Once, one was told, "You're not a real Christian because you do not go to church every Sunday." One was told, "You are going to hell because your parents voted for Kamala Harris." Now, can you imagine the torment that other students who are not Christian receive? I can, because I hear about it, hear about their experiences daily from families within our district. Students who have brown skin are told every day by classmates that ICE is going to come and take their families away. Students are told they're in a cult when they say they're not a part of, or when they say they're a part of Other Face and, or even other denominations of Christianity. Putting up the Ten Commandments is not going to protect these students from the hatred they are already receiving, it's just adding gas to the fire. So, I ask you, find a solution. School should be a safe place for all students to receive a free and fair education, not just the white Christian nationalist students. This could look like diverse committees of parents, students, and staff. This could be a town hall. This could be making a point to educate students about, no matter how different we seem, we all have more in common than you think. Helen Keller said, "The highest result of education is tolerance," and Montgomery ISD will never be premier until this is the standard. One more thing, I noticed something was missing from our last school board meeting, something I have heard for what feels like years from this room, and I can't go on without saying this. The tarozzo at Creekside looks amazing, and I no longer trip on the tarozzo while walking down the halls, and I appreciate the attention to detail in the tarozzo. Thank you.
Next up is Mike Dobbs.
Hey, good evening, Dr. Ruffin, School Board. My name is Mike Dobbs. I'm a parent of two kids at Oak Hills, so thanks to Mr. Whitehead for all he does there. I'm here tonight to talk to you about school start times for the junior and senior schools at MSID, or MISD, excuse me. I'm recommending that the Board commence a study on, to find out the feasibility and desirability of later school start times for the junior and senior high schools. There are two options that can be considered, which I'll discuss later. Over the past few decades, numerous studies have shown that inadequate sleep has a negative impact on adolescents' mental health, academic performance, and school attendance. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, the optimal sleep for most teenagers is between eight and a half and nine hours per night. As kids enter puberty, their circadian rhythm, which is the body's internal clock that regulates our sleep-wait cycle, naturally shifts to a later sleep onset and later wake times. This means that teens naturally feel the need to stay up later and have a tougher time waking up in the morning. While there are several factors that affect the opportunity for teens to get enough sleep, school start times play an outside role. Currently, MISD school classes begin at 7:20 with a first bus pickup at 5:45. This requires some to wake up at 5 o'clock or earlier. In order to get the required, or I should say, recommended sleep, that means kids have to go to bed by 8:30 or 9:00. I don't know how many kids that are 13 to 18 go to, are able to go to sleep at 8:30 or 9:00 o'clock. Chronic fatigue and acute, chronic and acute fatigue degrades performance, negatively affects mood, and makes it difficult for our students to learn. It also increases tardiness and absences, which can affect the school budget. Communities around the country have begun making the change to later school start times to improve their students' experience. Study after study has shown that districts who moved their start times to later than 8:30, preferably 9:00 AM, saw increased test scores, increased attendance, and increased class participation, along with decreased incidences of mental health issues. In almost every case, students, educators, and parents report a higher satisfaction with their school experience. Starting school later would require some adjustments in the way that the families have organized their lives, but these challenges could be planned for and somewhat negated. As I mentioned earlier, there are two options. First, we could commission a pilot study in 26, 27 school year and pick one or two campuses to actually start the school year later, or start the school day later, and we can compare that to the ones that didn't start later. A second option would be to form a voluntary committee to do some research based on what other districts have run into and gather the data that they've, they've come up with and see if this will be right for our, for our district. We could then put that to a vote to the community to find out if the benefits are worth the cost. So, that's, that's kind of my three-minute pitch. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbs.
Yes, sir.
Moving on to the consent agenda, would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda? If none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas, agendas, A through C as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. Is there a second?
My second.
Thank you, Dr. Ivey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Item six, action items, MISD Police Department to appoint reserve police officers.
Okay. So, the legislative session has blessed us with a lot of bills that impacts education. Our team, our principals, our teachers are, I was going to say burdened, maybe blessed, blessed and burdened with many of the complications and challenges that come with implementing on the administrative side, a lot of these new laws. Some, we are less than eager to put into place, I guess you'd say, or maybe interested to see how it's actually going to impact what the intention of legislation was. And I say that to say this, this is not one of those things. This is one of those things that is really exciting for not just Montgomery ISD, but for our school districts that have their own police departments established. This action allows Chief Dory and his department to bring on reserve officers. And coming from a very small school district, for whatever reason, and Mr. Dennison was gracious enough to go to the Capitol and advocate for this bill that was penned and authored by Representative Metcalf, but coming from a very small school district, we had one police officer, and he was the police chief. And if that person ever left for lunch for chief training that they have to go to on a weekly basis, police departments and school districts were the only agency that were not allowed by code to have reserve officers. So now, this changes that and says we can bring on folks as, I hate to say we sub, and I'm a teacher, right? So, a substitute, right? To be able to step in and say, hey, help us in this area, we need extra support here. And so, this opens the door for that, for us to be able to bring on reserve officers, maybe they're retired officers from a different department that just want to still be involved and engaged and support our community. So, this is an exciting piece of legislation and one that we're really excited for. Thank you, Mr. Dennison, for your time spent at the Capitol testifying on behalf of this bill, so.
Is there a motion to approve the MISD Police Department appointment for reserve police officers as presented?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the MISD Department to appoint reserve police officers.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Any discussion?
I'll talk a little bit. I want to thank Representative Metcalf for taking my idea to the state. I never thought I'd be testifying at the Capitol. I found out like the day or two before to be up there. This doesn't, just like Dr. Ruffin said, it doesn't benefit just us, it benefits the whole state, so I'm happy to be part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison, for doing that. I think the benefit for districts across the state are just immense, and it's, it takes someone like yourself to step up with that initiative and that thought to get it across the finish line, and we are grateful for the fact that you did go above and beyond to get this accomplished.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right. Item 7A, GT Training, or Board Training.
So, we had this on our workshop, and Ms. Lindsay had a illness to attend to, so now she is here to give us the GT update and Board Training.
Illness and a toddler. This is my four-year-old who's in pre-K at Stewart Creek this year. We've been trading germs in our household, so as Dr. Ruffin said, I apologize for my absence previously. But I am excited to be here with you tonight, Dr. Ruffin, trustees. I'm Lindsay Norton Parago. I always start any introduction with an explanation of why I have two different last names, but I was married right before COVID and never changed my social security card, but did change my driver's license. So, I do go by my married last name of Parago, but all of my district communication is through my maiden name of Norton, so it's on the screen for anyone's easy reference. I hand out business cards wherever I go because of that. I'm going to get it fixed one day. It's just been so long now. But I am required by the Texas State Plan for the Education of Gifted and Talented Students to train our school board members on the Texas State Plan. It is the programming that drives everything that we do when it comes to GT. So, you should have in a folder in front of you both the Texas State Plan in its entirety as well as our revised MISD GT handbook. I've been in this role since April 21st of this year. We definitely have accomplished lots of things, and I have been a very busy person, but I've thoroughly enjoyed every minute of it, so I'm excited tonight to kind of walk you through the state plan. I'm going to give you a little bit of what we're doing right now in reference to the state plan, but I will also be back in the spring of this year to give you a complete analysis of our programming, and we're required to do that yearly, so you'll get to see all of the data that we've collected over the course of the year and the assessments that we've done on our programs. To start, these are just our compliance and guidance documents. The requirement for gifted education are provided in Texas Education Code, Texas Administrative Code, and the State Plan for the Education of Gifted and Talented Students. Updated as of September 2024, the State Plan provides all of the detailed expectations from the state in regards to gifted education. I have it printed, too many copies in too many places. It's what I live and breathe by at the moment. In the state plan, the state outlines their goal for gifted programming, and it really is to make sure that gifted and talented identified students demonstrate skills in self-directed learning, thinking, research, and communication, as evidenced by the development of innovative products and performances that reflect individuality, individuality and creativity in advanced in relation to students of similar age, experience, or environment. So, that is the state's goal for gifted identified students, and that mirrors what is in our handbook. For our high school graduates, the state's goal is that they produce professional-level products and performances after having participated in our gifted programming, so we definitely have a very high bar to achieve. The state has a definition of gifted and talented students, and our handbook mirrors this definition, but for all of the purposes in the state plan, gifted and talented students means a child or youth who performs that or shows the potential for performing at remarkably high levels of accomplishment when compared to other peers of the same age, experience, or environment. They go on to really specify that these are students who exhibit high-performance capability in intellectual, creative, or artistic areas that possess an unusual capacity for leadership and excel in a specific academic field. So, our goal for our programming is to really align with the state's definition of giftedness in those areas. The state plan is broken down into six different areas. If it's not been your nightly reading, it is very lengthy, but it is very detailed. If it's not been your nightly reading, it is very lengthy, but it is very detailed, and it is broken down into all of these six sections. So we'll go through each one briefly, just so that you understand what the state requires in each of those areas. For fidelity of services, every district must have a GT program of services that's in compliance with the state plan. If the district is out of compliance with any part of the plan, we must have a written plan specifying what action steps we're taking to achieve that compliance. Every district must have a manual or program guide that is accessible to the public and describes our services provided by the district and the referral and identification process. We do have that, as you have the handbook in front of you, and it is linked on our new website that is on the MISD main page. Every district must review the GT program of services, including funding and curriculum. The annual evaluation must be presented to the school board, so for the foreseeable future, I'll see you in the spring. Right now, I'm really excited because coming into a new programming has allowed me to really listen from our community members, listen to stakeholders, staff, students. I've really enjoyed just meeting with everyone who has something that they want to say about GT. It's been very educational, and we're really kind of aligning our services in light of a lot of that feedback. Our services right now, our goal is to provide gifted services to students in kindergarten through fifth grade by differentiating instruction, learning experiences, and/or opportunities in the four core content areas. That's language, arts, math, science, and social studies. That will lead to the advancement, to the development of advanced-level products and performances as the state plan requires. And we have a couple of different ways we're hoping to accomplish that through the use of depth and complexity icons and elements, participation in the Texas Performance Standards projects, or other project-based learning, and then other services as determined appropriate for our students. For our students in grades six through 12, we're going to be differentiating instruction, learning experiences, and opportunities in advanced-level classes that are in the four core content areas, language, arts, math, science, and social studies. Our goal again is that that leads to the development of advanced-level products and performances, and again includes the use of depth and complexity elements, participation in Texas Performance Standards projects, or other project-based learning. It also will include our concurrent or dual-credit classes, and then other services that are determined appropriate for the student. In addition to those services, we are excited this year that we are going to be supporting and providing in all of our elementary campuses, extension with our identified gifted students. We have worked tirelessly to hire a paraprofessional in the department. She's a really exciting young woman that was a registered behavior technician in Conroe, and so she's going to be helping us create equitable extension on all of our elementary campuses starting this year. We've also revamped our junior high GT advisory and have a really exciting plan in place for our students, and both of our teams at Oak Hills and MJH are excited to implement that. We are in the works of planning our GT field trips again, which I know a lot of our parents have requested, so we're excited to be in the planning phases of that. And then our high school offerings are coming back online with our semester seminars, so we'll be offering an improv opportunity to our high school students this fall, and then also some college services in the form of understanding what scholarships are available for gifted identified students. A lot of our high schoolers are not aware that there are specific scholarships and programs for them, so we're excited to bring that to our high school students. Our biggest goals this year with our services are support for classroom teachers with differentiation for gifted students, and then communication is our second goal right along with that. For the student identification piece in the state plan, they do say that a district should have in place referral policies and procedures for students in kindergarten through 12th grade. Those are going to be posted on our website. We have multiple measures that need to be used to determine a student's eligibility for services, and our testing and identification align with that. A student must be given the opportunity to be reassessed or retested once a year for placement, even if they have been tested and denied services previously, and we do that. And then we must have a policy in place for transfer students, furlough, exit, and reassessment, and acceleration, and credit by exam. All of the schools have worked tirelessly. We have, I think, processed almost 40 transfer students from other districts at this moment. Oak Hills has already processed nine that have qualified. I think I worked on another six today. So we are working with registrars and these sending school districts to make sure that we're accurately identifying students that were qualified as gifted and talented in other districts, and then processing that transfer so that they can participate in our programming as well. In the curriculum and instruction section of the state plan, it is required that GT services are provided in each of the four core content areas. That's math, science, language, arts, and social studies. GT programs are required to provide challenging learning experiences, give opportunities for guided and independent research in areas of interest, provide learning experiences that lead to the development of advanced-level products and performances, and that adapt or modify the core or standard curriculum to meet the needs of GT students and those with special needs, such as twice-exceptional students, highly gifted, and students that are English learners and GT. We do have resources at our disposal, like the Texas Performance Standards projects, and those were created to help districts incorporate educational opportunities for GT students. We will be utilizing some of those in our elementary campuses and our extensions, and then at our junior high level, we are doing a blend of some of those projects in very small amounts, along with some project-based learning. They are TEAC-based, so we do like to use some of those because they do align with the curriculum the students are already learning. In the professional learning part of the state plan, the Board of Trustees must be trained on the state plan, which is why we are here. And then we have to have a written plan for professional development that is created and based on the annual evaluation results of campus and district needs. Coming into this role in the middle of, well, actually not even the middle, the ending of a school year, that's tricky to get an annual evaluation done so that we can align our programming. So what I used was informal feedback from our administrators in the district, from campus gifted and talented ambassadors, counselors across the district that are part of our identification process, and then parent feedback. My plan for, my professional learning plan for the summer was really exciting, and so I've been very encouraged by a lot of the attendance that we're having in some of our fall sessions, and then a lot of our campuses have started reaching out, asking for me to come train whole buildings. So I'm very excited to be even busier working with teachers on campuses. As far as family and community involvement, this is the sixth part of the state plan. The district should provide information to parents and to the community related to GT services and students. That includes written policies, learning opportunities for students, products, performances, and achievement of students, opportunity for the parent association or advocacy group, and then evaluation input and results. It is also required to have an awareness session for referral and identification, and that has to be made prior to the referral window. And then an informational meeting should be held to educate, update parents on the GT program. I'm very excited because on September 30th, at the Den, from 5:30 to 6:30, we will have our first fall informational meeting, and where we will accomplish a lot of this communication piece. And if you're the parent of an identified student at Montgomery ISD, then you got an email, because we sent it out through communications. We've put it on our Facebook page, and then we've also notified all of our campuses, just so that we can ensure that we reach all of our families. This is going to be for students that are already identified and those parents that want to learn more about our testing and identification. We're going to share all of the information, and we're excited to showcase the Den to our community and to our families. The program evaluation data will be coming this spring. I am a data nerd at heart, and I'm very excited to analyze all of the performance and the trajectories of our students, and so I'll be back this spring so that I can share that with you about how our programming has gone for the year. But I've been very excited to be in this role. I appreciate the opportunity to train you tonight on the state plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. 7B, Delivery of the Long Range Planning Committee Executive Summary.
Mr. Marino, and friends.
And friends.
And one of our own elected officials, Mayor Countryman. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, trustees. Goal five is communications and collaboration with our community, and getting input from our community, engaging them in major district decisions and planning and transparency are top priorities for the district. In 2024, we refresh our strategic plan in coordination and collaboration with many district stakeholders, parents, staff, students, and a part of that refresh included, you know, looking into the future of our school district as it relates to planning for growth. You know, Montgomery County is growing, and we are, you know, growth comes with benefits but also challenges, and we need to make sure that we are proactive in planning for the future. So this spring, in March of 2025, we convened a long-range planning committee that consisted of staff and parents and community members representing all 12 campuses, and they met a number of times to evaluate projected growth. We have third-party demographic study projections to, so they evaluated projected growth, our current facilities and the needs, and other priorities of the district. And over those meetings, they developed a set of recommendations and a support document, and we have a number of individuals from that committee here tonight to give an update and present those recommendations. So with me tonight is a parent at Lincoln and Montgomery Junior High, Courtney Solomon, our mayor, and parent at Montgomery High School, Sarah Countryman, Montgomery ISD's biggest fan and community member, Shannon Reed, and parent at Maylie Ranch and Montgomery Junior High, Sheridan Reed, and I also see Ms. Sparkman and Ms. Marshall here tonight. So thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you. So first, I will turn it over, I believe it is Sheridan.
Good evening. All right. From March through August of this year, nearly 40 parents, community members, business owners, Montgomery ISD graduates, and staff who are deeply invested and rooted in Montgomery ISD, we came together with district leaders to discuss the district's growth facilities and possible solutions to address district-related needs over the next decade. Over the course of five meetings, the committee gathered at various district facilities, allowing us to connect with one another while experiencing firsthand the campuses under consideration in the long-range planning process. Site visits that we did included the ESC administrative building, this building, Oak Hills Junior High, Lincoln Elementary, the Den, and Creekside Elementary. The Long Range Planning Committee was charged with studying existing district facilities by examining current and projected student enrollment on each campus, hearing from district leaders in various areas regarding needs to meet student, the needs to meet students, district and community goals and interests, and making recommendations to district leaders on fiscally responsible solutions to address student growth to meet district goals. Our purpose was not at all to recommend a bond election, but to develop fiscally responsible and long-term recommendations for facility use regarding the current facilities here at MISD and what is potentially needed in the future for growth.
Sarah Countryman. Through the course of our meetings, we focused on three primary areas: enrollment growth and capacity challenges at junior high schools and some elementary campuses, Lincoln Elementary School capacity and comparability to the other six elementary schools in the district, and future flexibility with district facilities. As our community continues to grow, so does the number of students walking through our school doors each year. With that growth comes both opportunity and challenge, especially when it comes to making sure every child has the space and resources they need to learn and thrive. Our committee studied the most recent demographic report from Zonda Education to learn about campuses' capacity, current enrollment, and enrollment projections. We also heard from district leadership on cost of building a new school versus renovating a current school, as well as portable buildings. This information led to discussions on possibly adjusting attendance boundaries in a way that keeps our current feeder patterns intact. Another discussion was making boundary adjustments that also shift feeder patterns to better balance enrollment and plan for growth of new subdivisions being built. Redrawing attendance boundaries is an immediate, cost-effective solution to address the growing overcapacity at several campuses. It also requires no new construction, presents an opportunity for operational savings by optimizing staffing and reducing the need for portable buildings or additional bus routes, and can possibly improve transportation efficiency and flexibility. However, attendance boundary changes may be an emotional adjustment for students and families. It may also be a short-term relief if the growth continues beyond what is expected. Other considerations were looking toward the future by building a third junior high or by introducing an intermediate school model that would reshape our grade levels and how students move through the system. Building a third junior high school would create a split in feeder patterns for the students which the committee did not deem favorable, along with the higher cost of a building at junior high versus an intermediate school. When presented with the intermediate school model, the committee discussed potential relief if it would bring to enrollment at the elementary and junior high campuses with kindergarten through fourth graders attending elementary school, fifth and sixth graders attending intermediate school, and seventh and eighth graders attending junior high. Another discussion point to assist with cost savings was repurposing an existing elementary campus and building a new intermediate school. The intermediate campus would serve up to 1,200 students each and defer the expected growth through the 2034-2035 school year, which would also postpone the need for a third junior high. The committee did acknowledge some potential challenges with the intermediate school model, one being logistical challenges for four levels in the school system with arrival and dismissal times and school bus routes. For students, there may be also adjustments in changing campuses every couple of years. When it comes to solutions, our responsibility is to manage growth in a way that is fiscally responsible while still keeping students at the center of our decisions. In the short term, adding portable buildings might help us relieve pressure where it's needed most, but in the long term, we want to continue exploring options like the intermediate school model, solutions that could provide lasting benefits for our students, family, and community.
Lincoln Elementary School and its school site have been a cornerstone for our district for many years, serving generations of students and families. But as we look to the future, we must consider how to bring this campus to a level that's comparable with the other six elementary schools, ensuring all of our students have access to the same quality of learning environment. The current capacity of Lincoln Elementary School is 525 students, while other elementary campuses are built for a capacity of 900 students. The Long Range Planning Committee explored a few options. One option is to expand the school at its current location, building onto what currently exists. Another option is to rebuild the campus entirely but on the same site, giving Lincoln a fresh start while honoring its legacy. A third possibility would be to build a new, at a new location altogether, and could also provide opportunities to better serve throughout the community. And of course, we could also look at adjusting elementary boundaries to balance enrollment across the campuses. As for possible solutions, there are both short- and long-term options on the table. In the near term, adding learning cottages could help to ease capacity challenges at Lincoln Elementary, giving them a closer capacity comparison to other campuses. In the long term, our goal would be to bring Lincoln Elementary School to a comparable capacity with the other elementary schools in the district, all while keeping students and families at the heart of our decision-making. As we plan for the future, it's not just our campuses that we need to think about, it's also our district facilities and the land that we need to grow. We know that land acquisition is key if we want to be prepared for future enrollment and growth in new campuses down the road. At the same time, the ESC, or Administration Building, where we're currently at this evening, plays a critical role in supporting all of our schools, and we have to consider how to best meet its needs moving forward. Our committee toured and evaluated this site. Even though it is a prime location for a future school or district facility, an assessment and tour of the site revealed concerns about its condition and substantial costs for repairs required to address structural issues. A possible solution we discussed for short term is to temporarily relocate ESC staff to available states at the Den. This is a cost-effective plan and would give flexibility to plan for a long-term solution. At the same time, we believe the district should be strategic in acquiring land now for future school sites, ensuring we're ready to serve our students and community well into the future.
To encapsulate meeting-
To encapsulate meeting discussions around growth projections, Lincoln Elementary School comparability, and future flexibility of the facilities and land, the Long Range Planning Committee participated in a tabletop exercise, processing through scenarios and prioritizing solutions. Group members were assigned a role of a parent, a student, a community member, teacher or staff, principal, superintendent, and a chief financial officer. As the groups discussed the possible solutions, each role brought to the group's attention considerations that we have been mindful of throughout our committee's meetings. First, the student impact. Will this change support a stable and consistent learning environment while meeting the social and emotional needs of our students? The ease of implementation, what would be the impact of this transition for our students, our staff, and our transportation systems? Third, the financial impact. What is the transportation and/or our administrative costs that are involved? And finally, our community's perception. How will parents react to redrawing attendance boundaries that could potentially lead to students attending different campuses? Or how will the community members react to a potential bond election in the future? The prioritization of solutions exercise led our Long Range Planning Committee to our agreed-upon intents and supports. We recognize the urgency of addressing the district's growth and capacity issues, but we advocate strongly for a balanced approach that combines immediate, cost-effective solutions with strategic, long-term planning. The intermediate school model, attendance boundary revisions, and Lincoln Elementary School comparability were identified as the most viable paths moving forward. Portable buildings may serve as a temporary but visible solution, though relocating special programs limits students and families' ability to remain a part of a consistent community. Land acquisitions remain proactive and necessary for our future growth. The Long Range Planning Committee recommends exploring low-cost options before bond proposals, prioritizing student and staff safety, minimizing disruption to the learning environment, and ultimately building sustainable solutions that align with our district's long-range vision. The Long Range Planning Committee supports, at the appropriate time, redrawing attendance boundaries as an immediate, cost-effective solution to address the growing overcapacity at several of our campuses. The Long Range Committee supports, at the appropriate time, introducing the concept of the intermediate school model into our district's grade band structure. The Long Range Planning Committee supports, at the appropriate time, bringing the capacity of Lincoln Elementary School to a comparable number with the other six elementary schools in Montgomery ISD, having the full capacity of 900 students. The Long Range Planning Committee supports, at the appropriate time, further discussions and analysis to determine the viability of using the current ESC site for a future school, taking into account factors such as our projected growth and development near the downtown Montgomery area. And the Long Range Planning Committee supports the district's ongoing efforts to identify and acquire strategic properties for future campuses, helping to mitigate escalating land costs and ensuring the district can respond effectively to continued enrollment The Long Range Planning Committee will continue to convene as updated demographic information becomes available, refining this living document, our premier roadmap, to reflect community priorities and guide the future growth of Montgomery ISD. The committee encourages ongoing transparency, stakeholder engagement, and a commitment to ensuring the best educational outcome for all Montgomery ISD students. Thank you.
So thank you, everyone. We are pleased to present the premier roadmap. This will be a living and breathing document that will be placed on the district website tonight. And we will reconvene the Long Range Planning Committee as necessary based on updated enrollment and demographic projections, which we receive in spring of 2026. So with that, do you have any questions for me or members of the committee?
I just want to say to all the volunteers who volunteered to be on the Long Range Planning Committee, thank you. I attended a couple of meetings. Everyone took it very seriously, a lot of good discussion, and so thank you for volunteering your time for that.
I'll say, echo that. You four ladies that graciously volunteered again to come up and present this information and the others that could attend, I appreciate that. But I had a meeting, a couple of meetings in the past week with different community groups and we talked, one of the slides was our mission statement. And the first eight words in that mission statement deal with in partnership with our community and families. And then it goes on to say what we're going to accomplish, right? And we can't accomplish the rest if we're not committed to the first eight words. And this, this committee getting together to help us not only identify the challenges and obstacles ahead, but really help us align our path forward in a way that aligns with our district's and community's vision and values is a great example of what that means to be in partnership with our communities and families. As the, as senior leadership, we are looking at the financial side, we're looking at the demographic reports, looking at attendance projections, we're looking at withdrawal rates, we're looking at all these things. And we can kind of present, hey, this is going to be a challenge in the future, but that doesn't mean we have the answer on how to perfectly solve it. And so the, the things that I want to touch on real quick are, and Ms. Reed, all of y'all did a great job presenting it. Thank y'all so much. Ms. Shannon Reed, y'all got two of Reeds over there. She was talking through those, those recommendations or support pieces and it was, everything was qualified as, when appropriate, right? Because our, our enrollment is changing. Our, our demographic study, which we'll have one in November, I can tell you, our enrollment's lower now than it was last year at this time. That, that might surprise some folks, but understanding that though the intermediate school model, though expansion, expansion into Lincoln Elementary School, all those are discussed, they're discussed as when appropriate, right? So I don't want anyone to hear from this, that we're putting the cart in front of the horse or anything like that, but in order for us to navigate these obstacles, the 40 of us that got together over, over multiple months of meetings, in which we didn't even feed y'all that, I just realized that as I was talking, we didn't have dinner. We had snacks, but we gotta do better next time. We gotta get yous dinner. The willingness of y'all to give us that feedback and really, like Mr. Cameron said, be very collaborative in those meetings is just very much appreciated. I want to thank Huckabee for our partnership to help us walk through this process also. And just, just really pleased with this outcome. And as Mr. Marino said, it's a living, breathing document. Everything that we do, we want to be transparent, so this is going to be up on our website. And as we get our next demographic report, we'll convene that group back together and say, does this change anything, right? So just, just want to echo my appreciation. Thank y'all.
I had the opportunity to attend some of these meetings as well and participate in some of these activities and just seeing the involvement from everybody that was involved was pretty spectacular. I think it's important to note that our community know that, that we're not going to go out until it's time to go out for another bond. We're in a good place right now and everything leads us to believe right now that there's no need for that. So I think it's important to note that the community knows that there is no plan immediately to go out for a bond. I know it's been said in the past that there is some of that happening. I just want to reiterate that that is not happening right now. And I want to thank you ladies again for coming tonight and speaking. It's, it's fun to see the involvement from the community and how passionate people are in those meetings. And just when you, you put such a wide range of people in a room and you start hearing their ideas and you start putting it on paper and you see how it actually works, it, in my opinion, it is one of the reasons that we are premier. So thank you again for all the time and effort that was put into it. And if there is no other comments or discussions, it is now 6:57 and this meeting is adjourned.